No, no. It was just like.
Yeah. Because it's.
I don't know. It was a lot of stuff outside. You shouldn't really be here, you know? I'm just very. I don't know. It was just like.
Wonder why it's not showing up on the YouTube. Oh, it's thinking. Okay.
All right, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight for our first town hall meeting. And I want to point out, excuse me, it's just managerial things around the room. We have some QR codes located in different spots. If you think of something at an end or don't feel comfortable speaking or proud or run. Welcome to share your input, really QR code. I'll share a proud team with you. The meeting goals and outcomes for tonight. We are still actively implementing two key initiatives, which resulted in the four day student week. Retention and collaboration are the two key initiatives. And we are here to gather feedback to improve its implementation and provide information about four day week to the community. And the outcomes we're hoping for is to inform and update four day calendar for 25 years. This is our agenda from six to six twenty. We're going to do a presentation on data we collected thus far. And at six twenty, we are open to questions. If you have any questions about data or otherwise. And then at six forty, we're. Some norms for this meeting. Please assume positive initiatives. We want to have an outcome that's positive for our students. And when we go through the public comment, we're going to follow the policy within two minutes limit. And if time runs out, we'll get the QR codes located and we'll get back to you.
Our slides on one analogy that we've used with the staff is that as we've implemented those two areas, collaboration. It is a big investment in terms of our human resource and effort of time to get everyone into their appropriate teams and departments. To define what roles and responsibilities in each of those areas are as well as planning on an annual basis. So it's taken a lot of time for us to get into that. Saying we use the analogy Pluto. We are the Pluto generation, not only having taken away from us, but also discovering that was really there and seeing what that image looked like. Back in nineteen ninety-four, right? It was literally just some pixels on a screen. Nineteen ninety-six started to come to focus. Back in two thousand fifteen, we actually make out some of the surface. You can compare that to two thousand eighteen, right? We can actually see some of the beautiful images of the plan. It's going to take some time for us to implement a collaborative model from K all the way to twelve, but we're well on our way. So that's been a really neat thing to see district wide, people putting an effort into making that happen. So we've collected some data that we will share with four hundred and eighty-three families, three respondents, nine hundred and sixty-four staff responses. We're going to share this information about retention recruitment again, still early in terms of retention, really is the end of this year and the hiring start for next year. That will kind of determine whether we have some success. But in terms of recruitment, we can address some of that, at least what we have from the past hiring sector this year, as well as the data about the collaboration Fridays. So one of our goals, well, our goal for the collaboration Friday early is to create clarity, vision, engagement as a district. And a hundred percent of our teams have been a part of that process. Each team, department, horizontal, vertical, part of our district has been stretching and learning a new model of how we make decisions, how we define. What we're going to be talking about in meetings, the agendas that we have. Again, how do we focus on the right information at the right time of the year? And then what are our top priorities? So again, when I say clarity, we're talking second step Pluto clarity, right? We will have much more clarity as we move down the road, but I can say from secretaries to horizontal, English, you know, K twelve math, special ed, student services, with all the meeting, trying to solve our prioritize work, biggest challenges right now. Start working on those, those issues. So we'll have some more data in terms of staff being a part of that process. But overwhelmingly, you know, those days we are spending that time working through those key initiatives. We have a standardized agenda. We're not working district wide that are based on one, one of the core operating things that you are responsible for in this committee. If you can't define what those are, then maybe we should be meeting in that committee or until we define, why are we meeting? It gives that department chair, which they need support to actually lead their peers, isn't that support to say, hey, we said this wasn't really helpful this year. Let's stay on target as well as define what's. We appreciate the, this bit of data came back to us from the staff. I feel like the staff are trying to curb them and they're ever and I really do see it and feel that in those meetings. Okay, helping culture, we talked about just some common language of how to drive in culture for folks to feel comfortable sharing their ideas, sharing their concerns. How do you problem solve in an organization if it's not a healthy scenario? It's not a healthy culture. It's really difficult to do that as well. Not a language about what healthy looks like for us as a district, as well as we talked about how we can empower individuals versus the traditional victim villain. Implement that into how we communicate on a daily basis when we're in those collaborative settings.
One of the pieces that I definitely heard is we talked about moving to a four day week was a concern around, or I guess a perception that a four day week was going to be less work for teachers, that this was a way for teachers to get more time off, for teachers to have less to do. And just as we focus on attendance for our students, knowing that in order to learn in a school environment, students have to be in the environment. If kids aren't there, then we can't do our job of teaching. As we look at the participation in the collaboration, one of the pieces we asked teachers and staff members to reflect on was their own participation in this process. If we are not committed to what we are doing, we're likely not going to do it very well. In this case, seventy-six point three percent of certified staff members felt that they participated in an active and positive manner. Sixteen point seven percent shared that they were participating. And we did have a few that were honest about the fact that maybe they were not actually right in there jumping in on this work. And maybe were non-supportive as a member of their team, which is a great. What I love about that is people are being honest about how they're participating in this, but the majority of our staff are definitely giving it a good try. As we look at our classified staff who are participating in collaboration, we see a similar look where sixty-three point three percent of staff members felt that they were participating in an active and positive manner. For many of our classified staff, this hasn't really been an opportunity previously, where it was hard for secretaries to get together, to work together, to talk about certain things during a school day. And so we have groups of some of our classified staff who really haven't worked together before and are really enjoying that opportunity to align some of what they do in their own building and to learn from each other. Twenty-four point five percent said that they're participating and twelve recognized that they were a little bit neutral in how they're participating in their team. So this helps us look at just, you know, where do we maybe need to work on some buying? And we have other data that can help us with how do we improve that so that it is more relevant and we can get more committed participation during this time. The second piece that we looked at that Mr. Ashton referenced, the fact that it's a little bit hard to know in terms of retention and recruitment at this point, right? This is the first year when this was decided. People may, like, I don't know how unknown it was that we were moving to a four day week, right? In year one, we don't have a reputation for this yet, so it may or may not have impacted hiring for this school year. But we do have some things that we can share that are either things that we feel, as well as sort of looking at our positions that we've had available. We did have a high number of certified applicants this year. I do not have exact numbers from previous years, so I'm not going to share them tonight because I don't want to misrepresent. But I do feel these numbers for a community of our size, for the rural nature of our location, eighty-five applicants for elementary teaching positions. This doesn't look up to date. So I'll just fill in these numbers. It was, I think it's actually. Somebody's were, so fifty-six applicants for elementary teaching positions. Sixty-three applicants for high school positions. This is just for this school year, so the pool of applicants for positions. And then fifty-nine positions are applicants for middle school positions. That's a high number of qualified people trying to work in our district. Some of these may have been dual qualified to where maybe I applied for an elementary and a middle school position, but that's, those are the numbers that we haven't really seen, right? There were definitely times where we had a certified position and did not have a single qualified applicant apply. So these are exciting numbers to take a look at. When we look at retention, this is just what types of positions did we open? People leave for different reasons. One thing we know and are watching is the fact that we have many teachers at the top of our kind of salary schedule, many teachers that have years of experience that are looking in the next couple of years at retirement. So you will always have turnover of staff. There's really kind of nothing that we can do about that, right? You will always have people retiring, you will always have people entering. When we look at the different positions we've had open, when we look at twenty-two, twenty-three, we did not have open admin positions. We had twenty-one certified positions that we opened for new teachers. Twenty-six paras were hired and looked for one secretary, three bus drivers, four custodial maintenance staff, no technology staff and four cooks. As we look from twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, there's two areas that this year were significantly different. And we attribute this solely to the fact that it's a four day student week, not necessarily, but it's something to look at as we look at this data moving forward. And that is in paras. Twenty-six paras in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-three paras. We only had fourteen para positions for this year. That's almost half of what we are used to hiring for some of our most important staff members. That's exciting. We also saw a pretty significant difference when you look at the number of positions in our district, where we were hiring about four cooks a year to just having one open cook position. That's exciting. So can we attribute this solely to that? No, but we can like potentially some impact on retention from this year. And then we look also at that highly, high preparedness of our staff members. Some of these numbers are a little skewed by the fact that we are increasing the number of foreign certified teachers in our district. I want to be upfront about that as we grow our language program and prioritize teachers who are native Spanish speakers. We are hiring teachers who are prepared in a foreign country, who have to enter on an alternative authorization, because Idaho doesn't always recognize all of the pieces of a foreign university. So some of this is a little bit skewed, but as we look at the number of teachers or certified staff members that we had who had an alternative authorization, meaning their original certification was not sufficient to meet Idaho's requirements for the position that they were hired for. Was seventeen in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven in twenty-three, twenty-four and sixteen for this year. This is an area that we would also like to begin to look at as we are looking at the impact of a four day student week on retaining and recruiting. The last piece was we asked our staff members, does the fact that we are on a four day student week impact your decision-making of whether or not you're going to continue in the position you're in? Fifty-six point five percent of certified staff who responded said that they were more likely to continue because we are on a four day student week. Twenty percent said likely, down to three and a half percent said they were unlikely or less likely to continue because of the four day week. When we look at our classified, pretty similar in that fifty-nine point two percent indicated that they're more likely to down to two percent less likely.
Up here, what we have now has some really exciting data and feedback from our certified and classified staff. What we're seeing with these Fridays are really some neat opportunities, right? We've had an opportunity for our staff to connect, right? They're, they're, they're working together, they're building those key relationships, right? They're collaborating, they're feeling supported, not just by our admin team that's doing a great job of directing it, but by teacher leaders, right? And teachers are getting the opportunity to lead. As teams are getting the opportunity to direct and set the vision and outcomes for our district with those initiatives and where they're going. So there's really a lot of great data and feedback here as you look at it, you know, you've got stronger relationships, you know, all that as you. Certified and it's shown, you know, very similar mark sixty-one percent stronger relationships with classified. You know, all of these things with these connections and these relationships and building that vision, these are all things that teachers, they're certified, they're here, they're excited to be here. And our, our support staff and everything that they do, and they're excited to be here. And that's showing because they're buying in, they want to come back and that's going to lead to that stronger retention. You know, it's a great opportunity, there's really good feedback coming in. Looked for, you know, the survey that we sent out two weeks ago, it's just an open response feedback. What can we improve? What can we do differently? And from staff, and that would include those certified and classified staff. The big things were flexibility and autonomy. As the strategy said, we created working teams that are vertical, that are horizontal, their grade level, their department, their district wide. We have a lot of teams working at the same time. And it's created a bit of a balance. There's an imbalance in the collaboration. So teachers have given us the feedback. They would like a little more flexibility in terms of how we organize our teams, maybe the scheduling of our teams, again, district, their stability. And then about ten percent of our staff, certified staff, and about four percent of classified staff felt that the change in the schedule had created a bit of a pain point in terms of their preparation. So they felt like the collaborative model that we've used this year has reduced their preparation time. That's something that we want to acknowledge and that, you know, I knew as an administrative team, we're thinking about frequently. And then from parents, you look for feedback from parents. A lot of the feedback that we got, and when we coded this, we were looking for common themes that were mentioned. Concerns about winter sports, your organization of winter sports was a frequent concern. Our Friday opportunities for students, that came up as well. This was frequently mentioned, again, six percent out of eleven percent on here for community activities. But there was a common theme of organized activities for students on Fridays. And then adjustments to the schedules, parents have provided lots of good feedback for Monday, so Friday off. Could we have some rotations in terms of how we're working through our four day week? Just a bit of advice for us. And then a solid over ten percent, nine percent specifically requested a return to a five day week, right? Ten percent of our respondents, we had about four hundred.
Eighty-seven.
Four hundred and eighty-seven. So we had about ten percent wanted to return to a five day week. And about an equal number wanted us to do, take some action to shorten the school day. A lot of the recommendations that we were looking at were pretty extensive school year by short, you know, in order to shorten the school day. What, what could we do? Again, this is the kind of feedback that we are hoping for from parents. And I know this is the type of feedback that we're all going to spend a lot of time thinking about over the next two months.
That's the end of our data. So we're going to open it up to a question and answer opportunity. If you have questions, you can stand up or if you feel more comfortable, you can come up towards the front and we'll do our best to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any data to offer on attendance? I know that wasn't one of your original goal items, but just as a teacher, I know one of my observations is that I'm seeing more kids in my class for those four days because they have that Friday to go to gymnastics and hockey and so forth. Has that been a positive unintended possible consequence? Just wondering if you've got any information on that.
Sure, we're working through that. We decided not to touch upon that because of the recent with our attendance policies. So we're going to be addressing that in our next board meetings, clean up the policy to be more explicit about what excused and unexcused look like.
Fair, thank you.
The answer is yes, we're seeing a positive impact on it.
I'm curious, do you have any data on the number of or percentage or number of families that are utilizing, that are currently utilizing the fifth day programming? I mean, if we do, that might help put into context perhaps some of the parental feedback.
Sure, and we initially had that as a part of our survey and we omitted it because the fifth day programming is separate from our school district. And so we're actually going to be sending a survey out with Sarah and Betsy regarding the fifth day programming and people, their awareness, who's utilizing it, how often they're using it. And so we'll get that out to you.
Do we have numbers on like that percentage that wants to revert to five day or longer days? Is that more geared towards maybe younger grades, you know?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it was a bit of a balance on that. I would say that was more frequently set at the K three level, but there were definitely respondents at all levels for that. It was forty-seven responses that said that.
So how does attendance figure in, correlate with four day? And I guess what I'm asking is, you know, like the state of Idaho has a certain number of required hours. I guess what I'm asking is, you know, like the state of Idaho has a certain number of required hours, educational hours. But how is, how is attendance like a missed day? How is that, is that calculated by hours as well, or is that, or is that? Do you calculate attendance by days?
So we report attendance to the state in chunks of time. So for today, for instance, I can be reported as, it differs for elementary versus secondary because of classroom periods, right? So I, but we can, we get a one for a full day of attendance, right? So if I attended the majority of the school day, I'm going to get a full one for today's attendance. If I have not met the majority of today's school hours, and so each of our, the way that we build our calendar and report it, right? It says students should be here from X to Y time. If I don't get the majority, I can get a point five, right? So I can earn a one today, a point five today, or a nothing, right? So it's a one, a point five, or a zero for each day. Then that's reported for each student every single day that's expected in a school year. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it kind of does. I guess what I'm wondering is, does attendance, do missed days have greater implications or impacts on a four-day school week than a five-day school week?
That would be hard to quantify as somebody who's looked at all the numbers. On a four-day student week, we actually have more instructional time at every level than we had on our five-day calendar. So if you look at it just from a time perspective, right? I don't, I feel like you could argue that it has less, right? But because we, but I think that it's, there are pieces of education that are cumulative in that if I miss today's lesson on X, tomorrow when I get there and I didn't have that lesson and I don't understand that, I may be missing something key to coming in. So for me, that cumulative nature is anytime we miss instruction, we're losing, right? Because you're missing something that may connect to what's happening tomorrow or may connect to what, like you might learn in a week. So I, I find it hard to quantify that. In terms of the length of our student day, right now, our instructional time lost from an absence would be seven point one hours. In comparison on a five, one day would be, like it was, I think, six point two. And that's, so it's more time missed for an absence because it's a longer school day. If that, I know it's not a great concern.
That's, that's, that's hilarious, I hear.
Oh, that's for secondary.
You know, I'd say, I would say in terms of the hours and the schedule, I feel like at the middle school level, we kind of settled into the four-day number of hours and seat time, amount of attachment in each class. We'll say one area where I do feel like what you're talking about, when we did have a snow day. Or we had a cold day. I do think that extra day right on Friday plus a Monday, it does kind of create a little bit of a barrier to re-entry on Tuesday. There, there is a little bit of loss, I think that's something we need to consider moving forwards and really carefully weigh those days because especially on a, you know, Friday to Monday, you know, that's four possibly plus days that we're trying to manage for that student's re-entry.
I think I have one comment behind or one question behind, but something that we have found on high school level is that CEI has come up, and I forget the name of the state program that gives students money to attend college classes.
Advanced opportunities.
Yeah, and so what we've found is that having that Friday off, there are some programs where students can take advantage of going down to CEI for one day and taking a class, and so they can facilitate that and still attend in school.
Do you have any data on substitute teachers if you're needing less or more on that? And if you're being able to fill those substitute teaching positions more or less?
That's a great question. We didn't dig into that, but we will.
I would just say that as a person who's done in our building previously quite a bit, the number of times that I've had to sit so far this year is like once or twice for me, just to fill in small groups. But just the amount of time I've had to leave to go cover our classroom significantly less.
I just wanted to go back to the nine percent question, if ever answered, yes. Did you say forty-seven, you said forty-seven people responded with that?
There were forty-seven people who said that out of the four hundred seventy, or how do I say? Four hundred eighty-six responses, forty-seven said.
And that was that open-ended question, that was a comment question. Do you think that if that question was asked outright, that that would be a different number? Just very split, who hasn't heard. You know, like you specifically said, do you want to return to a five-day week? You know, as a yes or no, I'm just curious if you think that would be, that number would be higher. And do you think there's that, there's value in doing that, I guess?
I would say it doesn't care when we give these feedback questions. And being someone who has taken like a lot, sorry, there's a lot. I, I wonder, have you guys consulted with like a survey group who tries to not have he opened in and persuaded and tasted statistics from an opening question? That just doesn't seem correct. I've never seen someone take this typically from an opening question. Someone like, you know, just answers in a way that maybe they thought it was, yeah, I'm not for it, or I am for it, we made our own, and we decided it differently. So I don't know, parent feedback question is so hard. It's the only representation I've really had, and I would love to see a little work on those.
That makes total sense. I think it was, it was more of an effort to show qualitative data. It's tough to share qualitative data when it's en masse like that. I think we're just trying to break it down into categories and say, this many responses tackle this topic. But you're right, it's progress through the year, right? That needs to be an area of focus.
Yeah, I mean, like potatoes, statistics, like this does seem very like someone made it and leaving rather than someone who understands statistics and would know how to quantify data. And that's probably just as we go through, I just would like to see that because I want to see like how we quantify data otherwise. And I know today we're not going to quantify all the data because we haven't done this time now. But I do think that some of the stuff that we shared today, I'm like, it's just, not that I'm not going to support, but it's, it's just crap data, and we remove our crap data. That's not going to be good for the long-term approach that we take with this. And it's almost persuaded, and how can we just keep, continue telling the community this is positive, this is positive, because that's a biased opinion. And if I did that in my job, like it would be really bad, right? And so we know that like statistics can often kind of persuade in a biased way. So I guess it's sort of feedback, and it came from that questionnaire, and that's because of multiple questionnaires, and it's where we can, hopefully, Asian, women, they're probably not money for asking to have like an actual physical analysis. But just no one in the community is probably really helping that.
I could, I could piggyback off that. For instance, there was one question that was, name something positive about a four-day week, and there were like five responses, and you left that blank. You didn't choose anything, you couldn't even complete the survey. So you had to go and, you're kind of forced to fill out something. So I don't, I don't know how like filling in the other, like you were saying, I don't know how like, like the other box and like, okay, I gotta sit here and I gotta figure out something positive about this. Or some people just said, there was nothing positive about this. So getting better data, I think, finding better, finding ways to, you know, create our questions and get better data.
And I would, I would like to applaud you for putting this out. In the first place, I really appreciate getting a baseline of some kind and like, you know, we have to figure out what are the right questions to ask. So I want to appreciate that piece. If when you send me a job from your list serve, they could be introduced in a way that is not just a link, that would be awesome as opposed to just a subject line. You can write a paragraph, you can say why. The subject line of the link is not overly compelling, and I would really appreciate a, a better delivery there. And then secondly, I have another follow-up question, just it feels like the trimester situation kind of came along with this. And I'm wondering if you can speak to at the upper levels in high school, like poor classes not being delivered around on the new trimester schedule.
Well, first of all, we haven't finished a whole year, so I can't give you any data, right? But the majority of the school districts around us are on trimesters, and they have data that they shared with us when we were looking at it, you know, the last seven years before we moved to it, that it didn't affect their data one way or another.
I just, I mean, I was talking about the summer slide and just a long weekend, and getting kids back into it, but to not have math for six months seems.
We have students that go a year without math currently, you know, because what they like to have is three years, and we have kids that go full years without math, so.
They're also the bottom of the state or, you know, the country.
Well, it depends on how you, how you determine that. Because if you look at state testing only, or you look at SAT only, or stuff like that, those are, those are skewed data because kids don't care, okay? When they get to high school, they do not care about a state test. When they think, you look at our ACT testing, where only the kids that want to do it, that's a completely different data set, okay? And where they're selling, okay? We have the highest graduation rate in the area, okay, of schools our size. We had, just came back, ninety-seven, one point one percent of our students graduated, okay? That's awesome. The ones that didn't graduate are ones that don't grace our door, okay? We find a way to get them there, they're doing great things, okay? But going back to the trimester, getting that, I can't, we just, we just started it, okay? But I can tell you.
I just wonder if the district's choice, it just seems like a curious choice.
Yeah, we've been looking at that long before the four-day student week came around. We were looking at it for about seven years before we moved to that. It just happened to coincide, okay?
I'm getting into some of the academics that people are bringing up. The recent paper from the University of Montana has statistics that show that their ACT scores for students on a four-day schedule were lower than ACT scores for students on a five-day schedule, and they were looking at all of the students in Montana. Furthermore, the average ACT scores decreased the longer the students had been in a four-day school week situation. How are we organizing our academic data and our investigation benchmarks? We don't have the luxury of doing a longitudinal study and then saying, oh gee, I guess our ACT scores are, in our case, MATE scores are lower. So how are we tracking that to make sure that we don't adversely impact large groups of students over time?
So I would say one of the most important pieces of this whole effort is built around collaboration and this concept of if you as a team never have a chance to actually talk to each other, how do you guarantee that what's happening in every classroom is highly effective? It's high-quality teaching and learning. And if teams are, they are part of every single facet of organizational behavior. If you have never, if you don't have time to actually meet as a team, how do you guarantee that one, every classroom is teaching to the top of those standards? Every classroom is receiving high-quality instruction? So our goal with the collaboration has been to carve out a space because it will never, collaboration will never just happen as we build into our operations on, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. And so I can see a lot of the conversation pieces that, that have not been able to happen have been happening. I'll give you an example. So in our electives team, our electives use it, art, PDE, help, computers, they meet as a team to discuss, they're a part of our safety net as a school. One of the things that happens if a student is struggling in math, they, we pull them up for a chunk of time and give them a math intervention. And one of the challenges of that is how do we get the right kids in and then out back into their elective when they have shown right that they're progressing? We've done intensive intervention in math, six weeks, four weeks, whatever that is, to help them start thriving in math. So just last week, our electives team and our CAM math, which is our intervention math, sat down and carved out a space for them to say, okay. They went through each one of those children, and their data points to say, okay, the child is progressing, let's move them back, right? Electives was there to create a landing place for them to optimize, right? Their re-entry into that and out of that intervention. It really is, it's poetry in motion because it is, we have to explain that scenario as well as, on the other end, math teachers who really need to meet together to say, hey, here are kids who are in crisis here based on our data points. This child needs intervention. If you don't have space for those teachers to have those crucial conversations, those kids who need that intervention, we leave it to chance, right? Or we put on one, one person to say, right? To communicate by email, you know, or word of mouth to say, hey, this kid needs to get an intervention. Versus you build it into your daily operations, your operations, say, hey, it's that time of the month where we tackle kids who need interventions. So a lot of those conversations that I think are crucial to tackle what you're saying, if it was just a four-day week conversation, I would say you're right. I would be worried about our students' academic, but the conversations that I've seen are rich. They're professional, they're guided by, one, they're trying to solve what are our biggest problems? In the math department, right? They sat down and prioritized what's keeping us stuck, right? Then they prioritized them one, two, ten, let's start with the top three. That same thing happened in special ed, in English, social studies, across the district. On a horizontal level, grade-wide, meaning how are we guaranteed that we all teach the same, by high quality of learning? To horizontal, how do we make sure that when kids leave sixth grade, seventh grade is fully informed of where each one of those children are? And that, that in my opinion, can help tackle that, that issue. Without the collaboration, it is simply a calendar change. As we're optimizing something versus with the collaboration, I really believe, I've seen at our school that, that we will get further, faster towards meeting child, children's individual needs because your teachers are one. We meet every day to focus on the safety net. I talk, talk about actual names of kids, how they're doing, look at the data points, and make sure that they get to the place and to the intervention that they need. Without it, we would struggle. So building that into our objectives.
And I like that, and I have seen some of the collaboration, and it's great. But the proof is in the pudding. So we have to have more engaged high school students, and those engaged high school students need to do better on their standardized tasks. How, how do you do this?
We have to, we cannot continue doing the same thing and get different results, right? This is something different. So we are doing something different for trimesters is one thing. Meeting every day is very important for our kids, you know, and, and getting them doing something different, and I think, and our teachers, they're, they're having to relook at what they're doing. And that's engaging teachers back into their, their content in ways that we weren't doing back then, the AB schedule, five-day week and things, without collaboration, you know? So that's exciting at the high school, is our teachers are relooking at things, our students are relooking at things, and we're, like you said, proof in the pudding. We have to go at it for longer than four months to be able to have any proof, any pudding, so.
Something I've realized in my tenure here at T-Don School District is that we are very data-rich, but we've never really known what to do with the data. So we're training our staff to know what to do with the data, specific data to see gains in student achievement. And that is absolutely a part of our conversations when we meet with our teams. You can have a team of math teachers come together and they bring different data that, that serves no curve. You can have a team of math teachers come together and they bring different data that, that serves no purpose. So having those key initiatives with specific data and looking for progress as they work on that goal is the end goal for this, for this four day week and the data piece. So we will see some gains with the specific data that we're tracking and we've been sharing that data with the school board every month. And so we're finishing up our winter assessments right now. And in February during the board meeting, we'll be able to give you the baseline data from the fall and progress report for the winter assessments.
Well, Catherine, I think that's a great question, that the math department, right, no one is more motivated to get that fixed than a math department. Give them some space to sit down with professionals and say, hey, we have the context, we have the, right, the professionals and the brain power and specific professionals in this subject area to solve that question. So I, I I don't think we're offended by that question at all, I think that is the question. Right, that these collaborative groups then start tackling. The question, if you can see the brainstorm, actually it's not great, it's a swath of numbers, strengths, subcutaneous threats. I guarantee you some of that verbiage, they may not have used the same, you know, piece at our school, right, we use similar verbiage, similar data as we went through, talked about our strengths or weaknesses, threats, and then prioritize those. So that uh, not the same, right, we don't do the ACT at the most schools, but similar, that same concept is leading our discussion in our data team, in our department area. Uh, social piece.
Can I just add to what Mr. Attwood said? Um, two things right quick, that, the CAM class, the intervention for those students that aren't meeting those test scores that they should, are those students that we see in class that get it, but it's not translating into a test score that matches what we see in class, that came out of collaboration. That wouldn't have happened if we weren't meeting as a department and figuring that stuff out. And it's not just the kids that need the safety net. We are also collaborating with what do we do with that kid that is clear up here? And we're teaching our standards down here to keep him or her engaged, to keep him or her actively growing. All of that happens because it's not just me going, gee, what do I do with this kid? It's the other sixth grade teachers and it's the other math teachers from me up and down that need to talk to figure out, hey, this is the path that this student needs. That doesn't happen without time. And it's been amazing to be part of.
Heather teaches math, so she knows what she's trying to do.
Um, I just, I have, I have kids in almost every middle school, every little one I meet, he's crazy, but I have a high schooler who really struggled and he's very smart, but really struggled with certain things at school academically. And switching to the trimester has changed everything for him. So are you saying like we have gaps from, you know, like first trimester to third trimester? And I can't really speak to that because we haven't done it yet, but I can speak to being in class every single day. He is way more engaged and has learned to apply himself and to learn the context, like context, I mean, contents are exponentially more than he did last year. And part of that, I think, is because he's in class every day. And I think part of it is the first trimester, he had almost every, um, core class. And then this trimester, I think he does not have English. And so he's able to put more of his focus and his, you know, effort into his math, which is kind of where he struggled. And that has been like, not just great for his grades, but like great for his soul and like to gain that confidence. And as a parent who has tried to like help him along, it has been such like a reason to see that happen.
And I could also bring back on um, on the trimester, seeing it from the teaching side of things. Um, I think looking at it as a G scores is fantastic, but also colleges aren't requiring AC, AC here, S A T anymore. And kids know that. And so I think there are also additional areas of data that we should look at. One that I noticed in my history classes in the fall is I have zero students fail in my class for the first time in six years. And that wasn't because I was teaching differently, I agree with Trey, that seeing them every day was powerful and I'm not saying that completely can happen on the trimester, but I've had zero failing grades and across the board in my pack time, I have fewer pack time kids who have failing grades. So I would say the level of engagement and achievement from our kids who aren't college bound are leveling up and I would also say are the coach who coaches in the fall and in the spring for our kids at the high school level who are already in sports, the trimester lines up beautifully with that schedule for them, where I have kids who know they're going to be in a sport and play in the fall, they put their core classes in the middle trimester because they knew they needed more time, more dedication to those harder classes, they were able to place those in the middle trimester where they weren't doing so many extra curriculars. And like maybe make that parallel to those extra curriculars in the future. I've seen it, the schedule for the high school right now with the trimester has been really complex to work with for a number of reasons, with so many priorities battling one another, not because we're at odds with each other, but we have kids wanting to use our friend, wants to be in sports and the very deep classes and not just needed a year to shift out. And I know it hasn't been ideal for a lot of people, but I have a lot of faith in Sam and our counselors to situate that so that everybody can have a piece in that puzzle and I appreciate parents' patience in allowing us to try to figure that out in our way too. But speaking from a coach and a teacher, the trimester worked better in a lot of ways than I expected.
And I'm piggybacking on that. I would absolutely agree, the ACT or the SAT is not the be all, the be all. Um, it's what the state uses. But part of what the community is looking for is what are the benchmarks? Are we looking at how many kids used to fail in the classes and now they're all passing? There has not been, from the community's standpoint, as far as I can see, a listing and, and explanation of what the benchmarks are for where we were and where we want to be.
So I think that's part of the data that the high school is planning to share with the board in February, going through the first trimester and comparing it to, um, school years in the past because we explicitly asked for these enough and, and we're going to see if there's a difference with the trimesters. So we will be sharing that data with you in February.
Okay, that's, um, it's been helpful for you. So just one thing you just, is there a way that you will be tracking not just the people who are coming up from failing, but the students who are then achieving, just because when you look at things statistically, you're not just, like, if you don't have a higher takers, your averages go down. So I think it's also important to look at the two met points. You guys have that, and the, um, what feedback have you had that you're um, anticipating changing something in the schedule or is, are you not in this meeting changing anything? For example, the ten hour days that a lot of the students have that ruse, is there a feedback to changing that to, to the in through the reschedule or, um, I mean, we need those plans changes to updating.
So, okay. Um, that was part of the data that the high school was planning on sharing with you as well. The number of AP courses and advanced classes that students are teaching, my experience. So that will also be in February report. And then the next piece, our calendar committee just met for the first time last week and we really didn't have the plans set in place. We just kind of talked about, um, the information and feedback we received from parents and staff members casually. So we're going to be using a lot of this data to kind of drive that decision making with the different calendar choices. In addition to that, shorter days was prevalent across the board, everybody was feeling the pain of the longer days. So we're definitely going to have that conversation.
Why?
Okay, what time are we? Okay, we're going to move on to comments really quick, if you have a comment. Um, and then like I said, use the QR code and we, if you have any questions, we will get back to you.
I'll be fast. Um, I just want to say thanks to you guys for hosting this, we've made a lot of changes in our district over the years and we don't know if it's ever going to follow up. About if the changes are working or not. Um, my kids personally are thriving on four days, I'm thriving on four days, I think it's fantastic. Um, I do have just a few concerns and then more at the high school level. And I'm just going to throw them out there, um, I don't need a response or anything, I know this is the first time we're doing this, so we don't have all the answers yet. Um, I have concerns with pack time, um, my kids are dying before them. Um, that time is so long and, but what I'm getting from them, and I don't know if this is true or not, right? This is just for what my kids are telling me. They don't have the opportunity to go to the teachers that they need help from, or if they uh, missed a test for a sports activity, the next day they're having to take their lunchtime to do it and I just think Sam, won't shake your head, this is the.
No, I, no, I'm writing it down.
I'm asking you. Um, I, I think it's a little better that the year's gone on that they're able to go to different classes, but but I asked them before I came here and they're just like, pack time is the worst. It's great for sports, my daughter thrived with pack time at the end of the day for sports. Um, the other concern of longer pack time is a shorter lunch and there's a lot of speeding to lunch. And my girl said that they cannot eat lunch at school because the line is too long. And by the time they, I think you're shaking her, I think you're, so they won't get lunch at school anymore because it's way too short because a lot of kids in the line don't have a company meal, their lunch is not, is not super awesome. But I, you know, we're, we're learning, like, I'm not mad or upset about it, like, I make my kids a lunch, they're fine, right? They're fine.
Thanks, guys.
I just wanted to report, um, as, uh, someone who has sat on a hiring committee um, at my school and at another school for the last few years, I wanted to just report in that the quality and number of candidates available, because I know that was one of the primary goals of the forty week, um, it, it was not in danger with this year, just knowing that the forty week was coming. And, and you can talk about why that was, but just, um, the, the availability of candidates and what they had to bring to the table and, and just highly qualified, it was just, it was so much different this past hiring season, just um, those who were interested in coming to this expensive cold place. Um, it was just so nice to have those people and be able to go, wow, who wants, who, who can they have come instead of who, you know, let's reach out. So I just wanted to report that in so that everybody had that as a factor on their radar, that that was a goal that I feel was really well meant, Megan presented that data, but I just wanted you all to hear that from boots on the ground, it was different this year from the last few years, hugely different.
Is there a way to bring back sports, even with folks different? Um, but I, I know I was looking forward to it for my kids, they're elementary school. Which is a, a, um, when I was, I was, when I went to District 91 and their sixth graders only did, we did winter sports, it was, um, nice being intelligent and then a junior high is next to anyone but you, because is there a way to I don't know, bring back, maybe a different.
Good point, yeah, we can, that's, I don't know. So I don't have that same time, maybe around six, I just.
All right, so I just think we really need to be careful about contributing the data to the one thing. Um, I've, I've taught for thirty-seven years, this is my thirty-seventh year. And, and we are just coming out of a pandemic that has had a major gap and in those thirty-seven years, we've never been filling holes like we have to fill from the pandemic. And, uh, and so, you know, going along with the collaboration, you know, that time is so critical to try to identify those kids, get those gaps filled, and get them where they need to be. And, you know, so, so that data is important, but, you know, we can't just say, oh, it's all four day week or, you know, it's all dependent or, you know, we've got to take that all into account.
Um, sorry, comment on more of the Montana, I think, go a little more on that. Um, I've, I've been super supportive of the changes that you guys have made all across. I feel like it's really exciting to see that you guys are working in different communities and how to make change here and make things for the better. And honestly, I didn't know about the trimester, I think I've got kids in the very um, younger grades right now, um, that sounds interesting, I think, but, um, I think what, what concerns me is that that fifteen year study that just came out in Montana and a place very similar, looking at schools that are similar to ours. And that, like, across the board, it's, you know, it's like fifteen percent defined and academic achievement um, more, like, more expensive, which I thought was very surprising, except for food, but maybe they weren't eating much anymore. And then, um, I think there was, maybe there were some other questions in there that just didn't seem like they were pointing in the right direction. And I guess I just want to encourage whoever's making decisions that we have with data from a place that's pretty similar to ours and take that into consideration moving forward. I think we all support the change and like trying to make this place better, but like, let's do it smart. You're like, let's not do another fifteen years and then come back and be like chucks, you know, that isn't the right move, so. Thanks for what you're doing, but, um, let's keep it, keep it going.
Seven o'clock, if you have anything additionally you'd like to share with them, please, like I said, use the QR code and we will get back to you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.